County School Board meeting for June 15th. We are at the Professional Development Center this evening. The first thing we need to do is to record the attendance. If we could do this as a voice, if we can have Rebecca reach out and call everyone's name, see if we can record our attendance, please.
Angela Durham.
Here.
Dan Cash. Dan.
He is here.
Elliot Mitchell. Brad Fiskus.
Here.
Gary Anderson.
Here.
Jake Albreth.
Here.
Sheila Cleveland.
Here.
Candy Emerson.
Here.
Rick Wimberly.
Here.
Casey Hall.
Here.
Eric Welch.
Here.
Nancy Garrett.
Here.
I have 11 in attendance.
All right, thank you. Next thing is the Pledge of Allegiance. Jason, if you'll lead us in the pledge this evening, and then remain standing quiet for a moment of silence.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Williamson County School Board is meeting electronically as it is necessary to protect public health, safety, welfare in light of the coronavirus. Williamson County School Board meeting held pursuant to Executive Order Number 16, signed by Governor Bill Lee, and waiver of Williamson County Board Policy 1.400, school board meetings and work sessions. And do we need to have the board vote on this still?
No need for an actual vote.
Okay, the next thing we have.
Sorry.
Next thing we have is items of particular public interest, public comment. This evening, it's obviously a little different for us. We have people who have previously signed up. We have four people who have signed up to speak. And as always, our policy allows for a maximum of 30 minutes. And so we'll do it at our normal time of about three minutes to speak. We're going to have, they will be appearing on your computer screens. So the first person we have to speak is Ally Finney. And if you would please state your name and your address, and then your topic of which you are speaking to, and the tech gentleman will allow you in. Are you there? Are you with us? Finney, are you with us?
And Mr. Chair, as we're waiting for Ms. Finney, I want to let you know that some of the names on the computer are not the names of the individuals who signed up. So it's possible they may pull up someone who's on the list that is using a different computer. Just make sure you're aware.
Okay.
I'm here.
Ally, Ally Finney, are you there?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair, as we're waiting for Ms. Finney, I want to let you know that some of the names on the computer are not the names of the individuals who signed up. So it's possible they may pull up someone who's on the list that is using a different computer. Just make sure you're aware.
Ally, Ally Finney, are you there?
I'm here.
And Mr. Chair, as we're waiting for Ms. Finney.
Why does it keep repeating?
Ally, if you would, when you hear this, please turn your volume down. Your live stream, your live stream volume down.
Okay.
That's what she's got her live stream going at the same time. That's what we're hearing.
All right, Ally, if you go ahead and state your name and your address and what you're going to talk about, and then you'll have three minutes. Ally, did you hear me?
Yes, I'm here. I was just turning down the live stream.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yes, state your name and your address and your topic, and then you'll have three minutes.
Great, thank you. My name, Ally Finney. The address is 503 Ardmore Place in Franklin, 37064. And I just wanted to talk about some of the procedures that you guys talked about for reopening schools. And then I also had a question, if I have time during my three minutes.
Okay.
So I think it was Mr. Wimberly had talked about how it might be optional if schools opened, that masks would be worn. And I was just hoping that that would be more of a mandatory situation because it's kind of.
She represents gifted education.
Can you hear me? Okay. Because it would help at-risk students, teachers, and staff, and all the families at home, if there are at-risk family members at home. And so I just thought the masks would be important if the kids actually were at school. And then if, for some reason, the kids are doing distance learning. I was looking at, I have a high schooler at Franklin High, and we were looking at some online options. And I know there aren't very many board-approved online options, especially for low cost. And I just wondered if that might be expanded if the kids ended up doing a lot more distance learning in the fall. And also just hopefully that the board would follow CDC-approved conditions. That's about it.
Okay, we thank you very much. Our next speaker is Stephen Prather. Stephen, are you with us? Stephen, are you with us?
He's joining now.
Okay, working through the technology parts. Stephen, are you with us now? Okay, Stephen, I see that your microphone's on. Are you with us?
I'm with you guys.
All right, if you would state your name, address, and your topic, and then you'll have three minutes for your presentation.
Yes, sir, thank you for letting me come on board and talk to you folks. My name is Stephen Prather. I live at 2034 Hunterwood Drive in the Hunterwood neighborhood. And I have four children this upcoming school year that'll be in the Williamson County school system. And I was just hoping to just kind of give a few brief comments on some of the tentative plans that I've seen come out for this upcoming school year.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate you guys letting me come on and talk. As I mentioned, this upcoming school year, I'll have four children at the Grassland Schools. I'll have a sixth grader at the Grassland Middle School. Then I'll have a fourth grader, a second grader, and a kindergartner. Let me first and foremost say that we've absolutely loved the Grass, I mean, the Williamson County school system. Grassland has been phenomenal. We've absolutely loved it. I wanted to voice a few concerns I have with some of the tentative plans that I've kind of seen floating around. I know there's been nothing definitive, but I did want to share some thoughts that I had. My biggest concern is that some of the tentative plans I've seen, in my view, pose the most problems for the most number of stakeholders. What I have seen and what I've read so far is that physical schooling would essentially be tied to kind of two primary things, which would be, one, the spread of COVID in the county, and, two, the potential positive cases in a given school environment. I guess I have two kind of, you know, I have a lot of questions, but then I have some comments as well. Now, first question on the spread would just be whether or not that would be applied to a specific school district, or would it be applied to the whole county? Would that be something that would be retested or relooked at daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly? In the event, in the event that it was isolated in certain nursing home communities, would that be looked at? And then as it relates to, you know, single cases, you know, potentially shutting down school systems, my biggest concern is that we're going to be in a state of total limbo as it relates to our children and their schooling. In the sense of if a single case and/or, you know, spread numbers could at any given time shut down physical schooling, it makes it, in my view, extremely difficult for kids to learn any kind of consistent manner, for parents to provide for their families in the manner that they want to, for teachers to teach in the way they're looking to, and for administrators to administer the way they want to. I just, I've talked to enough parents, and I'm hearing the same thing over and over again, that living in a state of constant limbo, where essentially the virus is running our lives, to me poses significant issues. And obviously, most importantly, is for our kids and the learning environment they're in, and then the ability for parents to be able to provide the way they need to without understanding the childcare needs that may happen on a day-to-day basis. So I have significant concerns with how that, you know, how that will be sustained as the school year goes, and the impact it will have on our children and obviously parents. I'm a commissioned salesperson, and I have some flexibility, but I need to be able to be at work in order to pay bills and to make money. I would like to encourage you guys to take a look at what some school systems like Bay County, Florida, is looking at doing, which is providing choices for parents that do want to distance learn based on whether it's fear, whether it's having a high-risk individual in their home. And then parents also could choose to have their kids physically in school with really the only thing shutting down the physical learning would be in the event of a governor-ordered or a federal-order shutdown. In my view, that allows for both parents, teachers, those at risk, those who fear the most options on how to approach the school year.
Your time is up, I thank you for your comments. Thank you very much. Our next presenter is Jennifer Cortez. Tech guys will be bringing Ms. Cortez into the meeting. Hey, Ms. Cortez, are you with us now?
Hi, yes, I am.
All right, welcome. If you'd please state your name and your address, and then what you plan to speak about, and then you'll have three minutes for your presentation.
Sure, thank you. My name's Jennifer Cortez, and I live at 424 Savannah Way in Franklin. And I'd like to speak about the issue of our children of color in our schools. Shall I go ahead? I'm not hearing anything.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay, yes, so first of all, I just wanted to thank each of you for all the countless hours of work you put in to make our schools so good. And as a mom of four, I'm truly thankful for that. So I'm here tonight to address a serious and urgent issue, and just asking each of you to tap into that place in yourself where you know what's true, where the part of you that knows what's true. Because I think we all know that the color, the children of color in Williamson County experience our community differently than the white children do. And they make up only 4% of our community, 4%. So we, the 90%, are the ones who hold all the power here. Every vote counts the same, but we white people have 90% of the votes. So it's our responsibility to swiftly identify and root out every vestige of systemic racism that we possibly can. And until we do that, at least 4% of our children are not safe in our schools. And if they're not safe, they can't learn. And before we begin to put up our defenses and say that that's just not true, I want to share with you a comment from a young woman of color who asked me to share this with you. I asked her what she would like me to share with the board, and here's what she said. "The consistent racism black students face takes a toll on us. It keeps us from focusing on our education. School isn't a place of learning for black students. It's a place of misery." So those are her words and not mine. But I did want to tell you a little bit about her story. And in her school, she did try to combat racism by taking a positive approach. So she founded African Americans Achievers Club at her school. And yet she still faced so many obstacles, like when she told her administrators that she didn't feel safe when she had to pass a Confederate flag that was on a locker, and they dismissed her repeatedly. Or when some kids were harassing her on the school bus, asking her where her daddy was because he traveled for work. And she brought it up, and she was asked, what did you do to provoke that? And how she began to be made to feel like a troublemaker because she was advocating for herself. So she began to shut down emotionally and have headaches and stomachaches, and the anxiety became all-consuming, and she eventually withdrew from school. So my question is, how many children of color are withdrawing from our schools? And this is happening on our watch. So I just have five quick points that I want to, action points that I want to share. First, we must all do some self-reflection and begin to educate ourselves about our own biases, which I promise you are there. Secondly, we must assemble a leadership team of people of color in the community to be our guides and consultants, and set aside money in the budget to pay them a consulting fee because they are experts, and we need to treat them as such. Third, we must examine the policies that already exist, and then ask this leadership team and ourselves, are these protections clear enough and strong enough? And if they're not, we need to make them clearer and stronger. Fourth, we must actively begin to educate our community about these policies and the need for them, and what they are and how they'll be enforced. And then fifth, the fifth one is on us, the community. We must offer you, the board and our leadership in all of our schools, coverage, support, and accountability as you face into this massive, emotionally-charged, critical issue. So I want to tell you that a grassroots group is forming to offer that support, and there's coverage across the political and religious spectrum. So I'm encouraged by that, and I wanted to let you know that. So I'd like to ask each of you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your speaking. Appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us.
Yes, thank you.
We have one, thank you very much. We have one more speaker. Person signed up to speak is Ann McGraw. We're looking to see if it's, okay, she is here. And Ms. McGraw, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Good evening. If you would state your name and your address, and then what you want to speak about, and then go ahead and begin.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Ann McGraw, and my address is 3451 Stagecoach Drive in Franklin. I'm going to be speaking about the same things Cortez just spoke about so eloquently. I wrote this down, so I want to be really careful with my words. Thank you to those who have responded to my emails about the seismic shift in acknowledging the systemic issue of racism and what we, what you can do about it. I just do not accept the party line. I'm hearing that this district requires more time to listen, learn, and understand the racial problems in our schools and community before taking real action. The Cultural Competency Committee started in January 2018. I thought for this sole purpose. Are we to understand that all of the stories that have been shared and suggestions for improvement have been for nothing? If two and a half years isn't long enough for us to get the lay of the land, then I don't know what will be. A parent came to public comment a few years ago asking how the district is improving diversity among our teachers and staff. That was years ago. There is literally nothing new that's happening right now other than a groundswell of public support for trying to right centuries of wrongs. There's not a single mention of diversity and inclusion in our strategic plan, despite it coming up numerous times in the community meetings that were held. 20% of our student body is non-white, yet around 95% of our teachers are white. There is little to no representation happening here. We have a Rebels High School mascot, a Confederate flag on our county seal, and we wonder why more minority teachers don't apply to WCS. But more distressing to our black students are the frequent instances of children of color being bullied or harassed in our schools with little to no consequences. And if you personally haven't heard from those parents, there's a reason. And it involves trust and open lines of communication. It's hard to earn, but I encourage all of you to try very hard to do so. You have a choice. You can ignore the very real experiences of some of your constituents who are fearful of speaking up and simply want the best schools for their children, same as the next person. Or you can say out loud that, yes, we have a problem to fix, and here's our action plan. Yes, it's a pandemic. Yes, you will have a lot to figure out all at once. Don't know how you're frankly doing this right now. But this cannot wait any longer. It's a top priority, and the community is watching very closely right now. Just as they followed along with the hotly debated vote to name a school after a black, presidentially-commended war hero who had been denied any recognition for almost 150 years. The no vote sent a message loud and clear. I choose to believe that wasn't intentional because I know you all and I know your hearts, but sometimes I'm not completely sure. Your reluctance to act during this moment in history beyond a very neutral and PC statement can be quickly remedied. Either these families are welcomed here, or they're not. Saying that Black Lives Matter in our school district is not a political act. It is not controversial, it's not an attack. It's just hopefully speaking the truth and then acting on it. Start a diversity task force, a real one. We did it in a flash for Safe Driving, so the model exists. Be on the right side of history and be the leaders I know you all can be for these students. As the quote goes, whatever you are not changing, you are choosing. Thank you so much for your time, you guys.
Thank you, Ms. McGraw. All right, board members, that ends our public interest, public comment time. Dana has recommended that we do vote on the Williamson County Board meeting being held pursuant to Executive Order. So I'm going to read that one again, and then we'll go back and do a roll call vote. Williamson County School Board meeting held pursuant to Executive Order Number 16, signed by Governor Bill Lee, and waiver of Williamson County School Board Policy 1.400, school board meetings and work sessions. And we need a motion and a second so we can vote on this item. Anyone like to make a motion on that? I see Ms. Garrett has her hand up. And Mr. Fiskus, is he okay with Ms. Garrett? Make the motion.
I make the motion that we proceed with this meeting in light of the Governor's executive declaration to protect the health and safety because of the coronavirus.
Thank you. And Mr. Fiskus, is that a second for that motion?
Yes, I will second that.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on it? I see none. And Ms. Hagan, if you'd please call the roll.
Angela Durham.
Yes.
Dan Cash.
Yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Jake Albreth.
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Yes.
Candy Emerson. Candy.
Yes.
Yes, Wimberly.
Yes.
Eric Welch.
Yes.
Casey Hall.
Yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
All right, thank you, board. Our next item is the Superintendent of Schools contract. I'd like to call Ms. Osbrook, so you present that to us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we discussed at the work session, the board has the opportunity tonight to extend Mr. Golden's contract from one, for one year. It is currently through June 18th of 2023. State law, it can be extended one year to June 17th, '24. The board also has the option of taking no action tonight, and the, his contract would remain at a three-year term.
Okay, I see, Mr. Wimberly, you have your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we extend Mr. Golden's contract from June 2023 to June 2024.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Okay, I see none. I'm not going to ask Mr. Golden for his recommendation, but I will ask, is this agreeable with you, sir?
Yes, sir, I will definitely accept if you all vote to make that offer to me.
All right, I'll assume that was your recommendation. All right, if we go ahead then and have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Hagan.
Angela Durham.
Yes.
Dan Cash.
Yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Jake Albreth.
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Yes.
Candy Emerson.
Absolutely.
Rick Wimberly.
Yes.
Eric Welch.
Yes.
Casey Hall.
Yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you, board. Congratulations. Mr. Golden, would you like to say anything real quick?
Well, sure, I'd like to thank you all for your support. And I know one item on the agenda, at the bottom of the agenda, is my evaluation. So I also want to thank you for that first-year evaluation. We spent some time at our work session talking about what we've done this year and what we have to do in the coming years. And I very much want to thank you for asking me to be this district's leader as we go through all the good work that we have ahead of us. So thank you.
All right, thank you. The next item we have is approval of the agenda. And we'd like to make a motion for approval of our agenda. Motion to approve. We have a motion. Anyone like to second that?
Second.
And we have a second from Mr. Cash. Any discussion on the agenda? All right, I see none. Go ahead and do the roll call vote, please.
Angela Durham.
Yes.
Dan Cash.
Yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Jake Albreth.
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Yes.
Candy Emerson.
Yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Yes.
Eric Welch.
Yes.
Casey Hall.
Yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thanks, board. The next item we have the vote on is the approval of the consent agenda. And I would like to make a motion for this. Motion to approve. We have a motion from Eric. And Mr. Fiskus, are you seconding that?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion about the consent agenda? All right, I see none. If we go ahead and do the roll call vote again, please.
Angela Durham.
Yes.
Dan Cash.
Yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Jake Albreth.
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Yes.
Candy Emerson.
Yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Yes.
Eric Welch.
Yes.
Casey Hall.
Yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you, board. With approval of the consent agenda, we approve the May 18th school board meeting minutes, the June 1st special called school board meeting minutes, the board policies on second reading, 3.500, and the food service management, 5.1082 on telework, 5.3051 on Families First Coronavirus Response Act, the 2020-2021 SAC fees revision, approval of fiscal year 2021 ESSER, which stands for Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Grant, the CARES Act, application and budget with superintendent authorizations. We approve the fiscal year 2021 IDEA partnership for systematic change for K through 12, the application and budget with superintendent authorizations. We approve the fiscal year 2021 IDEA Part B, compensatory grant to support innovative approaches for student with disabilities application and budget with superintendent authorizations. And we approve the 2020-2021 pay schedules. Thank you. The next item is the Communications to the Board Superintendent's Report. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to walk through a handful of items, but I first want to let you all know that it was nice to hear public comment. We've missed that the last couple of months. And I know that there were, of course, with technology, some steps with us having to be patient. But it was very good to hear some of our citizens talk over these last few months with COVID-19 and us doing these remote meetings. One of the, one of the big items that's in our policy that has changed a lot is communication from our citizens. And I know that there's been a good increase in our families and other residents of the county sharing with us by email and phone. of the county sharing with us by email and phone. But again, it's nice to hear that public comment. As part of that, Mr. Chair, I believe this is probably our last remote meeting, based on the Governor. So I'm also looking forward to having a meeting and seeing, seeing all of you in a, in a setting that, that, that's what we're traditionally used to. We, we project and anticipate that, that, that the state is going to continue on a process of reopening the state based on the documents that we've seen, and we, we definitely look forward to that. To that point, I want to mention a little bit about our public commenters. I know often traditionally for previous superintendents and this year that I've been superintendent, we don't spend a lot of time talking about individual public comments. We, we thank and acknowledge the folks and often have individual meetings. But I did want to mention that, that I really do appreciate the Board in setting the standard for us with, with respect to human decency and, and, and the way we treat everyone in our community with your policies. We mentioned this at the work session. I think it's important for everyone who didn't sit in on the work session to hear that. And then it's up to us to, to enforce those policies. So anytime we hear anything that, that, that even in the slightest alleges race discrimination, either by students or faculty, we, we demand of ourselves action. And that's very important to us. We'll tell you also, with, with, with these questions becoming much more widely discussed in our community, I see this as an opportunity for us to grow as well. So I do look forward to those, to those processes, to those discussions, to us taking those next steps so that, so that we can grow in, in how we relate to each other in the context of race, as, as that has especially been, been a topic locally and nationally. I do want to mention specifically Jordan Elementary, that, that was alluded to by one of the speakers. And that, that school was named after, after Williamson County's only recipient of the Congressional Medal of Honor, who, who fought for our country in the Army. And, 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 and it was a, it was a very impressive decision that the Board made to, to name that school after Sergeant Jordan, who, who of course passed decades and decades ago, close to a century ago, as he fought for our nation. I also do want to give you a short version of what we talked about at our work session regarding our draft reopening plan, really on the operational side. I want to encourage those who are listening to go back to our website and look at our discussion at our work session. One point of emphasis we try to remind folks about to make sure this word gets out is so much of the deep, detailed work of this Board occurs at our work session, and we often give synopses of that work here at, at the Board meeting. But one of the things I mentioned was a critical piece that we did not have from, from the state was a metric for when we close or when we open. That plan has that metric. So I appreciate the sharing from our community with their thoughts on that draft metric, including our safety standards. We're in the process of hearing from, from community groups. And so I would still encourage those who are, who are watching this to share with us your thoughts on, on what's appropriate. We also recognize that, that the burden on us is to manage the risk, knowing that there will be some risk in the event we go back to school based on COVID-19 and what's going to happen over these next few months. And so we're looking, we've got that draft metric that we believe is measurable. And again, we want to make sure that we, that we vet that with, with our community before we ultimately present this as a final plan in July. And I think, Mr. Chair, you may reference that as well. So the final thing I want to mention in my report, Mr. Chair, is we are having, at this time of year, and we always do, a number of retirements. But we have two regular participants in our Board meeting who are retiring this year. And we're not together physically. And often we'll step out into the dais and, and celebrate those retirees. But I want to specifically mention a couple of retirees. Rebecca Hagan, who's my assistant, is retiring at the end of this month. And I want to let everyone know in a public way how much I appreciate her. I started working with her when I first came to the district. And one of the things that really endeared her to me was she could actually read my handwriting. And, and, and she, she and I worked on policy for, for many years, and she has been such a great source of very practical knowledge as, as I've worked as first-year superintendent. So I want to publicly thank Rebecca Hagan and, and, and ask her to, to keep us in her mind and, as, as she's retired. And I'm so happy for her that she's going to be able to, to retire and, and spend some extra time with her family. So Rebecca, thank you very much. Second, Mr. Chair, I want to let everyone know, those who don't know, that Denise Goodwin is retiring. Denise made a commitment to me last year that she was going to work for another year. She had originally been thinking about retiring a year early, but I want to personally thank her for that commitment to leave the elementary schools one additional year. I take it as a personal thank you, but I know she did it for the district because she loves this district. She's spent her career here, and every time we're out anywhere as a group, I see someone come up to her and talk about something she did for a child somewhere, somehow down the line. And now I will tell you, it's been about three months since I've heard that because we haven't been able to go out much. But I, I can't number the, the individuals who, who have been impacted by the career that Denise Goodwin had as a teacher, as an administrator, as a leader. So I, I felt like it's very important for us as a group to publicly recognize Denise Goodwin and thank her for her service as well as she retires.
Well, thank you, Ms. McGraw. I see we have, Mr. Wimberly, you have your hand up. Were you wanting to talk, say anything about this subject?
Yes. Is, is his report concluded?
I'm ready for questions, yes, sir.
Okay, good. I appreciate being first up. First of all, wow, losing Rebecca and losing Denise, what a, what a blow to us all, what incredible, special people. And I just really enjoyed working alongside both of them. So thank you so much. That wasn't really what I intended, but I couldn't help but be struck by that opportunity to do that. We're sure going to miss both of you. Jason, so Ms. Finney asked a couple of good questions, and I suspect that they are still on people's minds. One relates to the use of mask. And I know in our work session, I heard the words recommended, I heard the word strongly recommended. And I, I, I think I'd like some clarification on what we're thinking. And it kind of extends to the, the level of responsibility that teachers are going to have to help make sure that their classes are properly social distanced and that masks are worn when appropriate. Teachers have so many responsibilities already and curious about the, the level of training they will get to, to do that. The, the other question that Ms. Finney asked was about online choices and online options. And if you look at what we've done historically, there are very few, but it may be worth restating what the plans are. And then if you would, if you would mind addressing the, the question of choices as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. So number one, we, we, we have talked about masks very deeply. We've had discussions at the administrative level and also started having some discussions with, with, with our, with our families and with our groups. So the CDC, in their guidelines, recommend masks in, 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 in the, in the environments of schools. Each one of the CDC guidelines makes recommendations, if feasible. So from a practical standpoint, one of the deep discussions we've had related to masks is what can be feasible. If you all recall in the PowerPoint I provided to you, the first bullet point includes a screening process per the CDC guidelines. So the details of that include individuals coming to school with masks and being checked. And what we're talking about differentially right now is, is check for temperature. Once students enter the school, to your point, it is, we, we are very concerned that it's a practical impossibility for, for every child to be able to wear a mask all the time. And so the, the, the differential recommendation we're making at this point for discussion is that recommendation for masks, which in my opinion carries a strong recommendation. I anticipate that a large portion of our students and faculty will be wearing masks. Now, as you all recall in our discussion at the work session, Mike Fletcher, our Safety Director, talked about the purposes of those masks. The purpose of, the general purpose of those cloth masks is to prevent the, something from leaving your mouth and going into the, into the atmosphere. And so what we've asked to be discussed with our community is, at that low level that's based on our metric, that recommendation. And so, so to, to use your language, strong recommendation, I do, I do anticipate that our final, our final plan will include a strong recommendation. But the truth is, we're still vetting that with our community. But we know that, that the capability of, of certain students and the, and to, to keep those masks on is, is a real challenge. Part of what we're doing with all these plans is finding feasible ways to manage this risk. So as part of that, we also recognize that many individuals may be uncomfortable with that point that, that we, or truthfully, anywhere in the country, any, any school system establishes that risk with that, with that screening process that we're talking about and, and the recommended mask. So we recognize that there are students who have, who have, who have immune compromised systems and also families who might hit that point of just not being comfortable. So one of the things we're doing as we're, as we're going through this process of vetting this draft is send a, a, a survey out to families to find out from them, given these standards, are you at a point as a, as a parent that, that you're comfortable with your child being in school? So, so that's part of what we're going to be sending out next week as well. So as we vet that balance and have more communication with medical professionals, I do believe that'll refine. But to answer your question clearly, that, that draft proposal for the low incidence does include recommended masks in the school building. And then the next step at the medium to high includes the required. So Ms. Finney also asked, to your point about online classes, we, we, we are in the second year, just finished up the second year of our online classes, and next year, students have already signed up for online classes. I have some approximate numbers in my mind of actual courses taken. We, we went, I believe I'm approximating, and I may call on Dr. Webb to give some, some more detail. We were at around 500 or so actual courses that first year. This past year, we jumped to about 1,900 total, total student seats. And this year, we have students already signed up for about 2,900 total seats in actual online classes. As part of that, we do, in addition to that, rather, we actually have some students taking courses that are, that are not offered in WCS, where they, where they are able to take some online through some other private providers. But we've seen a significant increase in our online classes for this COVID-19 process that we're addressing. Those 2,900 or so, so high school courses will be taken. At this stage, we don't have any, any, any more seats for that. But we do have in our plan that those options of on-campus class plus the, the potential for, for offering the, the remote lessons directly from our teachers in the event someone is unable or cannot take those courses as, as we, as we, as we planned for that. I do want to ask Dr. Webb if she can give some additional detail related to our online program.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Yes, that, that's accurate. For the upcoming school year, we have just over 2,950 requests for online classes. Our most popular of those courses are Personal Finance, Lifetime Wellness, and PE2. Those certainly are most requested. However, we do have students who request multiple classes in their class schedule. Last school year, we did have a handful of students who requested all of their classes to be taken online. That number still remains to be relatively small. However, you can see with that increase of over 1,000 course requests for the upcoming school year compared to last year, that it is growing in popularity. And to that end, we continue to have our teachers work to develop online curriculum so that we can increase the amount of courses because we do want to maintain the level of rigor to our online curriculum to match that of our classroom experience. So we're, we're certainly dedicated to that, and we look forward to continuing to develop this program to meet the needs of our students.
So if I may, may ask, though, there is, I think, a distinction between our online courses as we've known them historically and what we will be able to provide to families because of COVID. And to, to be able to provide options for, for the families who don't feel comfortable sending their kids back to the classrooms, families with high-risk situations, et cetera, et cetera. So can we kind of distinguish between the two of those and kind of, you know, park the online classes? I'm really more curious about how we're coming along and, and making these options available.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Wimberly. Our instructional staff has been working very hard these past, I'm going to, I'm going to say six-plus weeks, and plus even dating back to when COVID-19 hit for our, for the, for our remote learning plan. So I'll give you some specifics of where we are and, and with a caveat that we're still working on it. Number one, every course, not just at the high school level, but all through, all through our grade levels, will include daily instruction from our, from our teachers. We've been doing a lot of professional development for each of our teachers to be able to, to teach our courses remotely on a daily basis in the event we go remote, or to your point, if there, for those, for that, what I, what I believe is likely a small number of folks who need that. So, so we, so our plan is, at this point, I'm trying to remember the exact number, something like a 27-page plan that I will share with you all once we put that into, into a, into a final form. That, in addition to the daily instruction, it includes interactive. And you all may recall when the schools closed, there was a lot of discussion about what happens when schools are closed. This looks very different from what we saw in the spring because our plan is for a scheduled day for our students each day remotely. So I'm very encouraged about where we are with that remote learning plan. I will tell you my opinion, and Dr. Allen may be able to, to add some detail as well. My opinion is that at the high school level, there are some students who can sit those six and a half to seven hours going class to class with direct instruction from their teachers with this remote learning plan. At the younger grades, there's going to be a much more significant mix of, of activities so that students have that power to, to spend time interacting with their, with their teachers and be able to do some, some, some specials, art, PE through the course of the school day. One of the things that we know from the state is, in the event we have a remote learning plan, it will be school as normal from a scheduling standpoint. And so that's, that's what, that's what we're working towards. With, with that being said, I do want to invite Dr. Allen to give us, to give some, some example details based on Mr. Wimberly's question regarding our remote learning plan. Dr. Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Golden. Good evening, members of the Board. So I think it's a good question, Mr. Wimberly, and it's one that we've been discussing. So we, we started, as Mr. Golden said, we started developing a remote learning plan several weeks ago, but more recently, we've begun to discuss what options, if any, can we provide those students and those families if we are open and they can't attend? And so to Mrs. Finney's specific question about additional options at the high school, I will say that, that, that is something that we're interested in doing, but I, but we're having conversations logistically about what we can do. We have hundreds of course offerings, and so it's difficult for us to create a schedule with current staffing. So we won't be able to go back and ask for additional staffing. So we're trying to make this work within the budget that we have. And so it's a complex dilemma that we have. I will tell you that we are interested in providing those options. The challenge is having the available staffing to provide those options and making it work within our current staffing ratios. So Ms. Finney's question is, is on our minds. I know Dr. Webb and I have had that conversation several times, and we're continuing to have that conversation, and we're trying to strike the balance of providing options but doing it in a fiscally responsible way.
And, and so related, final piece related to that, student safety has to be number one for us, and, and, and of course, education goes hand in hand with that. And so, so that is part of what we're trying to hear from our families over these next couple of weeks as we finalize our plan. of weeks as we finalize our plan.
And I guess I have to add something that I think is going to be real important is for us to establish some clarity because, you know, I heard several things in the last 10 minutes. And granted, it is confusing, granted, it is constantly changing, but let's, you know, I encourage us to work towards some clarity and some, you know, not that we're not giving straight answers, but clarity in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. We have three other, four other board members now that would like to speak. The next one is Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've talked about this issue over the last week and today, as I went back through and rewatched the video and studied the PowerPoint, there are two things as a board member that I am keenly interested in. And the first is, what can we do to stay in school for the longest amount of time? What measures do we need to take to make sure that we are ensuring the safety of students and teachers and all of our staff? And then the second one is, and I mentioned this the other night, and I have had so many people reach out to me since that time, people I didn't know before, but said, you know, I'm keenly interested in this issue too. And that is, how do we protect the health of our teachers and staff? We already have very scarce resources in terms of teachers, bus drivers, SAC folks. Basically, across the board, you're in a scarce resource situation, and these folks are extremely valuable and have been key in our success as a district. So how do we protect them in a way that they also feel protected, given that what we know about this virus is that adults are more at risk? So those are two things that I would kind of like to flip the script on, you know, at every, you know, every model that we're looking at. How can we make sure that we ensure those two things? We know that our families want to be in school. We know that our parents need to go to work. We want to stay in school as much as we can. How do we ensure that we're being safe and that we're able to, at the same time, protect our staff and teachers? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Mr. Cash, you're up next.
A phone call away to me, and I so appreciate it, and thank you for your dedication to our students. I agree with both Rick and Nancy. This is so big, there is so much to consider with kids going back to school, and I know staffs worked hard on it, and we've got all these edicts or suggestions from so many, and it's just, it's big. But the meeting Thursday, our work session, was a great meeting in my eyes because we got to hear personal concerns from board members, which we'll have again tonight. But I am really excited about this survey, and I encourage all stakeholders in this county to fill it out, all. This is very important so that we have the hearsay from folks out there that are living in this COVID-19 society right now. And we can put this all together and put in place the best working plan and best safety measures for our schools. Again, I agree with Ms. Garrett on bus drivers and our staffs and so many, and all our people. We've got to have some assurance that it's going to be safe. And I just, I'm excited about it, and I can't wait to have a board meeting specifically on this issue. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Our next speaker is Mr. Galbraith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason, there's one question I got from a couple of people was, and we neglected to talk about it on Thursday night, was the rationale behind why you're not recommending any of the hybrid options that you put forward in the first framework of the three ways we might be going back to school. Can you speak to that?
Sure. And then so, from a hybrid perspective, when we first started talking about this, what we were thinking about, and you all may recall this, is it's basically taking turns in school. And that was driven largely by one of the CDC recommendations about the six-feet social distancing. And so we recognize it was a practical matter. If you honor that recommendation, there's no way to actually physically be in the classroom. And so we did, early on, explore the possibility of 50/50. And what we determined, for a number of reasons, that it was, that it was not feasible. And I want to emphasize that the CDC guidelines talk about recommendations if feasible. So I'll give you some examples of why we determined it wasn't feasible. Number one, we talked about bus routes. Even if we went half in some of our bus routes, we would still have some examples of students not truly being six feet apart. We are talking about the possibility of stretching out some of our bus routes or having, in some really dense areas, a more staggered schedule, but to truly do 50/50, we would still have some problems here and there with six-feet social distancing. Likewise, we determined that, from a staffing perspective, if we had half of our students there to maintain that six-foot social distancing recommendation, then those students who were not there would not be getting direct instruction from teachers because those teachers would actually be teaching the students who happened to be there. And students would have, every other day, in the classroom, without direct instruction every other day. We anticipated, and so far, this has borne out, that it's very, very needed for students to have daily direct instruction from teachers. And so that potential hybrid model was not feasible in that way. Another item related to that was parent scheduling, the unpredictability of it, and some of what we saw, the inconsistency of it, was something that we determined was very difficult. Also, from a scheduling perspective, if you balance bus routes with siblings who are at different schools, with particular grade levels that individuals are in and individual classes, if we did a 50/50 in every classroom, then that could not feasibly work at every single high school course because students move from class to class. Likewise, there would be a logistical challenge with those individuals at a particular class maybe having a different schedule from siblings, thus creating a more difficult logistical situation for families. So I just touched on a handful of the challenges we saw in what has been described as a true 50/50 hybrid. But with that being said, I will tell you that in the event we have to go fully remote, I do believe that we have the potential to do a number of special education services in very isolated settings in the school building, depending on what we hear from our medical professionals, where we are in the event COVID-19 spikes again, and we have to be closed.
Okay, thank you. That was, I know we had talked about this over the weekend, Jason, so thanks for clarifying that for the people who have asked. We talked a little bit about the numbers, the half a percent, the 1%. What are we doing to revisit that over the coming weeks? Because I know we said that the number is not set in stone, but it will be looked at. So how are we reviewing that with the health officials and state, all the different parties out there?
So we are having conversations, and we've already started those conversations with both local health authorities, EMA authorities, and state officials. As I told you all, we had not gotten any direction from the State Department of Ed or the Health Department with any proposed metrics for when we open and when we close. For those of us who study what's going on in other parts of the state, likewise, I think that's been a point of struggle for many school districts. So we also are exploring what some of you as board members brought up at our work session. Is there a possibility for a measurable metric related to individual schools or regions within the county? The information we have right now and can receive from the county is that daily report on active cases. And that was one of the big reasons our safety department landed on that percentage based on active cases in the county because we do have that information available. But we are actually also exploring the extent to which we might be able to get some more detailed information from the Health Department on locations and students. So Mr. Samuels is here, and I, Mr. Samuels, I'm going to let you fill that in or call on someone else in your department to put some extra detail related to that.
It's a challenge at this point to get detailed localized data. It hasn't been available yet, so we are pursuing that. We're talking to folks at the state level as well as health experts here locally, and we haven't cracked that nut yet, but we are continuing to try and figure that one out so that we can have better granularity between individual schools as opposed to just doing a district-wide approach, or at least to see what kind of options we have for that.
And if I may, Mr. Galbraith, also, with respect to the metric itself and the point at which we address that, we have heard from some individuals just in the last couple of days, the proposition that it might be a little high, the proposition that it might be a little low. We still solicit from the State Health Department or the State Department of Education a metric that those professionals believe is appropriate. We haven't received, we haven't received any directive from either of those agencies, but we felt like it was important for us to get this started. You guys know that we're just under two months before school starts back, and we felt like we were at a point where, based on the information we had in our consultations with local emergency folks, that we needed to set that out. My hope is that one of the items that this conversation may do is maybe break a logjam and get some more detail for the wisdom of that metric. Mr. Samuels, I know, has had some conversations with professionals related to that as well.
Thank you. And one more, one last question. I look forward to hearing from more parents, certainly with the survey, but also hopefully in person or, you know, at least in an open forum for parents to be able to hear from other parents and for you guys to be able to hear and us to be able to hear from those parents local or in person or as a group. But can, are we compiling a kind of a frequently asked question list? Because I feel like there's, until we hear from these parents, and we're going to hear from, you know, from thousands of them with the survey, but I think we're going to find that as thorough as you've been able to be, parents have a way of finding the questions that really get down to at a granular detail of, that really put pressure on any kind of plan that you've tried to have, that you try to make as all-encompassing as possible, but it just can't handle every scenario. So I guess whether before or after the survey goes out, I guess, as part of our communication plan, I hope that that includes some frequently asked questions and a lot of bidirectional communication between not only the central office staff, but also pushing it down at the school level as well. And I know there's always some back-to-school communication, but this is just going to have to be incredibly nimble, and like I said, the bidirectional communication is going to be really important. So I appreciate you guys and everything that you've done thus far, and especially over the next three weeks is going to be quite busy for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Galbraith. Our next speaker is Mr. Welch.
Thank you. So Jason, kind of wanted to jump back to the conversation that Rick had started, and I'm sorry if I'm re-asking something you've already answered, but if a parent is in a situation where their home life is, they're in a very at-risk group, recovering from a disease with a lowered immune system, caring for someone very elderly or some other concern that they have about their children attending public schools in person, what are their options for full online course or something alternative? Is there anything?
Well, so number one, we do have a homebound program for students who are immune compromised and physically can't go to school because of their health. But we also believe that we have the opportunity now to bump up that program way beyond what it has been up to this point. And so more specifically, with what Dr. Allen has been working on with our remote learning plan, which includes daily instruction, what we are working on is the ability to pull teachers based on the numbers of students who are in that position and actually have those teachers teach full remote on a daily basis. So that's part of the information we're trying to receive in the survey that will be going out next week. How many students, how many families are in that position where, whether because of a health issue or because of the risk really going on with their family, based upon the procedures that we set up from the choices of the CDC they can't do? So we feel very good about our potential to have some of our teachers teach that online, especially at the younger grades. Now, like Dr. Allen mentioned, we have our teachers set, and so that's actually going to be a staffing issue that we'll have to do the math on so that we can pull enough teachers out. His discussion that he mentioned to you was especially at the high school level. So part of what we're going to be driving through is the number of courses, the specific courses that students are taking to make sure that we can provide what we have in the context of a full remote for each individual class. So that's going to take a little bit more scheduling work over these next couple of months. Has the potential to pull a teacher for one class period, for example, in a course, or give them additional online resources to fill in for some of that work? So that's what he was alluding to. It's going to take a lot more detailed work to determine the courses that we can offer if we are in school for those individuals who are in a position where they can't do it.
So let me interrupt you there then. So I think what I'm hearing you say then, and let me know if this is accurate, is that is a plan in process still. Part of that parent survey, I would assume a large part of it, is trying to understand what that universe looks like, what that need will be, and those classes will kind of be pulled in more ad hoc and not really a zoning situation since it's online, but kind of more of a PTR situation. And then it sounds like potentially, with the caveat again of this, much of this being TBD, that it really could be any class and not necessarily just those limited to the personal finance, the DEs, the et cetera, that we already have an online system set up for. Is that a fair statement? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. And you mentioned PTR pupil-teacher ratio. That's part of what we're analyzing so that we can determine the scheduling aspect of that based on how many high school students determine that they can't be back in school. Yes.
Okay. And do you project for this online And do you project for this online, would there be a diagnosed need for it, or could it simply be an expressive preference? Or is that one of those things that kind of wait and have to see what the survey results look like and what the teacher availability and other reasons we have?
Well, number one, for those who might not need it for a diagnosed, we want to discourage that because we're convinced that on-campus is instructionally the best. But we recognize that there may be some who truly can't, who are truly in a position from a fear perspective that they, that they want that possibility. So, our survey is going to ask who are in that position as well, that they're not comfortable with it. And I wanna, again, emphasize that. Yep, okay, we're good.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. The, I'm sorry, what was that, Gary?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, yeah, so then I also wanted, I kind of appreciated Jay's questions about the half percent number. And Frank, I just want to take the opportunity to sort of say very publicly that I'm disappointed that our State Department of Education hasn't provided more hard numbers for us on this and that we are kind of adrift on ourselves to come up with this on our own. And I'm not, I'm stating that as my own and not on the district's behalf or anyone else, but I do wanna put that out there, that while we ask for sort of flexibility and control to look at what our local situation is, it would still be nice if we had a little bit more hard guidelines and recommendations that if these were the scenarios that your school district is experiencing, these are some of the recommendations rather than having to come up with this on our own. Along with that, though, want to say that I believe the staff is doing an excellent job. About a year and a half ago, I think, maybe two years ago, I know we had a community meeting about school safety around the time that some of the active shooters were going on. And at that point, I came away thinking that, you know, we had the best school safety officer in the state in Michael Fletcher, after having talked with him a little bit more today. Nothing has changed my mind. I know he's been having conversations with everyone from Williamson Medical Center to the city and county sheriffs, EMA Public Safety, city administration, our sister school district, WCBA, special education parents groups, the Tennessee Department of Education contacts there, contacts the Tennessee Department of Health, other districts, been checking the best resources on the CDC website. Essentially, every medical professional where he can get information from, Mr. Fletcher is going out there. And it really kind of comes down to it, we can rely on two sources, we can rely on medical professionals, or we can rely on medical amateurs. And there's not really any differentiation, there's no other middle ground. There's not a medical semi-prose where this is what I'm trained to do, but I'm keeping my eligibility for the Olympics. We really are getting the best resources from the person who knows our district quite well, everything that we've got in touch with it. So, as parents have these concerns, I think it's important that we let them know that we have professionals who know something and are asking the questions, are digging into it. An individual who's a 15-year EMT who's taking the point on this, and this is not his first rodeo. So, it's a bit of a rock and a hard place on what we decide to do, but these decisions are not being made lightly, and they're being made with great information, asking a lot of excellent questions.
Thank you for that, that very clear articulation, and I do appreciate you sharing that.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. We have Mr. Haw, who'd like to chime in on this subject. Mr. Haw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the conversation and the continued dialogue. Like Mr. Cash, I agree. I thought we had excellent discussion last Thursday, and we've had so much feedback from parents already, and it's very understandable. I think folks understand that what we put forward on Thursday is a proposed reopening framework draft. And by my count, that's three qualifiers in there that say that this is not a finalized plan. We are still discussing this with stakeholders, and unfortunately, there's a lot of uncertainty, and there's nothing people hate more collectively than the uncertainty, and that's just inherent with this. So, I appreciate the fact that we're still gathering information and not diving headfirst into something, but that we are still looking at CDC guidelines and that we are still working on the metrics, and we're receptive to new considerations. And I think that it's worth keeping in mind, too, that we are not, as Mr. Welch pointed out on Thursday, we're not an operational body. We vote on the policies and leave the operational aspects to the superintendent. And I think it's worth considering and putting ourselves in the superintendent's shoes instead of thinking that we could be on either side of a seven, five, 10, two vote. The superintendent is the one that has to make the decisions and live with the decisions. And when we're talking about a global pandemic of a novel virus that has impacts that we don't really know yet on the population and could have long-term deteriorious impacts on respiratory systems, you have to live with those decisions. And they impact students, they impact staff, faculty, families. So, I want to support Superintendent Golden on any decision that puts safety first throughout this process, and we all need to keep that in mind, that if we err, we do so on the side of safety, and not putting folks in harm's way is probably the most important thing we can do. One thing that I wanna kind of ask is, what, with so much input and so many questions as this is all being developed, what is your hope for the survey? And how do you intend to take so much information and funnel it down to the input that you need to make some of those operational decisions?
Sure. My number one hope for that survey is we find out from families where they are in their family with COVID-19 and their comfort level with their child being in an environment where there's a risk. The reality is, we've learned from medical professionals, we can't fully protect against the risk. And so, we want to honor families who are at the point of saying, you know what, I'm worried about my child being in that environment. And so, to Mr. Wimberly's, to Mr. Wimberly's question about us giving an option, we feel like it's very important for us to do everything we can to honor those families who have that. And that's why we want to get some numbers, so that we can work on the logistics of offering the remote option that our folks have been working so hard on to a limited number of folks, if at all possible. We know that the remote option is gonna be pretty robust, but the reality is there's a reason why we're in school. There's a reason why we do what we do. It's a stronger program. But to answer your question, we want to get some numbers from families who, based on their family's situation, are not and don't anticipate they're gonna be at a point in August that they're gonna want their child in that environment.
Mr. Haw, anything else?
In the same vein, how about the survey of faculty?
Same thing for faculty. So, we actually had a meeting today and talked about some of the details for faculty. And to Ms. Garrett's point, we are very concerned about all our stakeholders and our faculty and our teachers assistants as well. One of the things we're hoping is we'll have that ability to match up the numbers of families whose children need to be, need to be remote with teachers who are prepared to go remote. Another item that we're going to talk about with our, with our teachers is, do they need an accommodation? What extra health protections do they need? We want to make sure that we do right by our faculty as well. The big key, I think we all know this, but I think it's worth stating, the big key to COVID-19 as it relates to any other virus is there's not currently an immunization. And so, that's ultimately what we want to find out from our faculty as well.
Do you anticipate an option for open-ended comments?
Oh, that's a really good question. We're still putting that together, and I'll make sure that we have that as well. We have not nailed down that, so that's a good comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haw. Ms. Garrett, would you like to join back in?
Unfortunately, yes. I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, in addition to our Director of Security's expertise, our Director of Nursing for this district has a master's degree in public health. Public health is her passion, and she has lots of really important educational and work experience in this area. So, I wanted to acknowledge that. I also just want to be very clear about surveys. We've had some confusion about surveys in the past, and so, I would hope that our survey would be very clear about its intent and that it not be perceived as a survey vote if you want to go back to school, and if that gets the most votes, that's what's going to happen. We've had some surveys like that in the past, so just to be very spot-on about our survey before we send it out. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do, both of those comments are worth a quick mention for me. Tina Hamblin is our nursing supervisor. She's been wonderful, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention her specifically. We've got a great team working on this. Second, we have to make decisions based on the, based on the best medical information we can find and the most feasible way we can apply that, the list of CDC recommendations that are provided to us based on feasibility. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Mr. Fiskus?
Mr. Anderson, I do want to, it's been a while since we had somebody say this, but just appreciate Rebecca and Denise, and I just wanted to say that. And I also wanted to appreciate, thank Vicky. I had sent her an email, and I think several of us did, along the lines of what is our statistical age categories of our bus drivers and our substitute teachers? And so, she shared that information, and I think one of the things that we need to make clear, as Nancy has said and others have said, is that we're able to provide school if we're able to have the staff healthy to be there. In terms of bus drivers, just statistically, 77% of our bus drivers are over the age of 50. Almost 50% are over the age of 60. So, if you are out there in the community and you're looking for a way to help beyond wearing your mask and so on, and you have the ability to do this, we need drivers. We need people to step up and need drivers. Likewise, substitute teachers, 25% of our substitute teachers are over the age of 60, and 45% of them are over the age of 50. And so, if you have the ability to help, to do this as a sub, contact Vicky and be a part of that. But we have to make sure that as we're providing the opportunity for these students to be on campus, that we are doing all that we can to mitigate risk of spread, whether that's at home, when the students are not at school, because we can do all the precautions that we can at school, but yet if they go after school and other places and they're not following those same guidelines, then they can bring that back into school. Encouraging parents, I had a question from a parent wanting to know, why don't we test their temperature before they get on the bus? And so, my reply to them was, please make sure that you do that as a parent, check your child's temperature. If you are concerned about your child riding the bus and you have the ability, drive them into school and they'll do the temperature check there before they get out of the car. So, I think we all have to take some responsibility in this, but also just the call out for those that have the ability to help us substitute teachers, have the ability to apply to be a bus driver and go through training, we need you. We need a large pool in the event that we have illness in our schools, and that's not just with COVID. That could be any of the other illnesses that are out there that we would see during a regular school year. And the other concern that I have as the husband of a pediatrician is that we need to make sure that we're all up on our shots, our vaccines during this time. We don't want to have another, any other kind of a breakout, whether it's measles or mumps that we've seen on college campuses, or any other cases that could be prevented by vaccines. So, we all have to do our part to help us be on campus throughout this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fiskus. And I do want to emphasize, one of the items that we have seen over and over again in all the research we've done and all the communication we've had with medical professionals, the number one threshold protection is don't go to school if you're sick. So, I don't know that we can emphasize that enough, and we're gonna continue to emphasize that over these next few weeks. In the event we're able to go to school, that's a critical, critical piece. And I also want to mention a little bit more, we've talked about those options for families. We've chosen to work on that hard question of those families who might, who might be in a position where they don't feel like they can be at school. It would be really simple, and we could be done and have a clean plan, just saying, no, you know what, you're out of luck. But we felt like it's important to work on that detail and work on the scheduling possibilities related to that.
Anything else, Jason?
No, sir.
All right, I don't see any other members with their hands up, so thank you very much for that. For the Board Chairman's report, I want to just follow up on the same topic line. July 13th, Monday, July 13th, we hope to be meeting here at the Professional Development Room Board and go over the plan as, at that time, of what we're going to be doing. That gives us just a couple days short of four weeks before we open up. So, it gives time, if the board has some adjustments they want to see, really that the staff thinks are necessary, then we can do it. But basically, the idea is to have a meeting, and we typically don't have a meeting in July, so this is going extra, an extra time just because of this tremendous opportunity, I guess you could say, rather than problem. So, we're looking to meet here in person, not through Zoom, if at all possible, to do it here at the Professional Development Center on July 13th. I'd also want to thank tremendously Denise Goodwin and Rebecca Hagan. They have been absolutely wonderful to work with all these years. I was on committee with Denise a long, long, long time ago. I won't say how long, Denise, because I don't want to upset you as far as the amount of time we've both been together in the district, but just tremendous ladies, and I really appreciate their service to this community and to our district and the students overall, and they are gonna be missed because they won't be with us here in July. This is their last meeting. So, thank you, ladies, very much for your dedication to us, and blessed that you've been here with us. That's all I have, Board. The next item that we have is old unfinished business. We do not have any, so we move into new business. And the first one is 2019-2020 School Board Budget. We're looking at the Education Capital Projects Fund Amendment for Sunset Middle School Auditorium. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a need for an additional $250,000 to complete the Sunset Middle School Auditorium. As you all know, this is the last in a long line of auditoriums that we've been able to build over the course of about eight to 10 years. So, this is the last funding request that we anticipate for those, for those middle school auditoriums. We ask for your approval.
Okay. It has been tremendous to see the growth in our fine arts and especially in the middle schools now with these, so we are certainly appreciative that the commission has allowed us to go ahead and build these, and like Mr. Golden said, this is the last one. So, I'm looking for a motion for this, and would like to make a motion on this first one.
I do. I'm candid.
Candy makes a motion. Would like to second it? I'd like to second that. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I see none. If we, Ms. Hagan, can we do a roll call, please?
Yes. Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Barry Anderson?
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you, Board. The next one is the Intercategorie General Purpose School Fund Adjustment. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, every year, bring with Leslie Holman's efforts, the final end-of-the-year intercategory adjustment. So this is the proposed adjustment for the General Purpose School Fund. There'll be two to follow this one. We recommend approval to close out our year's books. If I've gotten that correct, Ms. Holman.
Ms. Holman, would you like to chime in on this?
Whoa. Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't find it. I was looking at the resolution. No, there's nothing other than, if you have any questions.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion for this one, for the budget adjustment?
I would.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Who was that?
Rick.
Rick, thank you. Thank you. Would you like to second this one?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? I don't see any, and Jason, I'm assuming this is your recommendation?
Yes, sir, recommend approval.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hagan, if you go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you. The next one is Intercategorie Transfer Central Cafeteria Adjustment. Mr. Golden?
Likewise, Mr. Chair, this is the end-of-year adjustments, intercategory, to close out the Central Cafeteria Fund for the year.
Thank you. Anyone like to make a motion for this one?
Motion to approve.
Leave a motion. Mr. Welch, anyone like to second?
Sheila will second.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland. Leave a motion and a second. Any further questions? I see none. This is your recommendation, Mr. Golden?
Yes, sir.
All right, if we go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot, I'm sorry. Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next one is the General Purpose School Fund Resolution for Lease Purchase for Career Technical Education.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This proposal is for a lease purchase agreement for career tech computers that are more advanced than our typical computers, and this example is for our TV and film classes. So we ask for your approval. These are computers that typically get replaced with higher quality as technological advances come on before their life expires.
Thank you. Anyone like to make a motion for this one?
Rick moves, still approve?
Candy, second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I see none. Let's go ahead and do a roll call, please, Ms. Hagan.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
All right, thank you. Now we're on to the 2020-2021 School Board Meeting Schedule. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Every year, of course, you all approve the proposed meeting dates for Policy Committee Work Session and Board Meeting. Just to remind everyone who might be listening, traditionally, the board meets on the third Monday of every month for their board meeting, and works the earlier meetings back based upon that Monday date. So absent a holiday or a scheduling issue, that's the way this is structured.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Anyone like to make a motion for the School Board Meeting Schedule?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Welch.
Sheila will second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the schedule? Okay, I see none. If we do a roll call, Ms. Hagan?
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
All right, thank you. Now we're on to the 2020-2021 School Board Meeting Schedule. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Every year, of course, you all approve the proposed meeting dates for Policy Committee Work Session and Board Meeting. Just to remind everyone who might be listening, traditionally, the board meets on the third Monday of every month for their board meeting, and works the earlier meetings back based upon that Monday date. So absent a holiday or a scheduling issue, that's the way this is structured.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Anyone like to make a motion for the School Board Meeting Schedule?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Welch.
Sheila will second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the schedule? Okay, I see none. If we do a roll call, Ms. Hagan?
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you, Board. The next item is our Board Evaluation, the Superintendent. I'd like to call Ms. Osbrook to walk us through that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I'm having some internet trouble again tonight, so I want to make sure you could hear me. The superintendent evaluation, we received an updated copy today from me via email, and the board has the option of approving the evaluation as scored.
Okay, so Ms. Osbrook, we're looking for the board to make a motion to vote to accept this, the scores as you've accumulated from the board members. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Okay. Board members, anyone like to make a motion to accept this document as the official evaluation for Mr. Golden, for his first year as our Director of Schools?
I do.
We have a motion from Ms. Candy. Ms. Emerson, anybody else? Like to make a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the evaluation? Okay, I see none. If we go ahead and do a roll call on this one, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you. The next one is the Intercategorie Transfer for Extended School Program Fund Adjustment. Golden?
Same as the previous two, Mr. Chair, recommend approval.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion on this one?
I still move.
Okay, we have a motion. Would you like to second it?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further comments, discussions? Okay, I see none. If we go ahead and do a roll call on this one, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next one is the General Purpose School Fund Resolution for Lease Purchase for Career Technical Education.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.